Councilmember Nick Farr.
President.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Welner is absent, Vice Mayor here is absent, and Mayor Fredericks.
Here. Lee, would you like to give us some information on public communication protocol?
Yes, if you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise head button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling in using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thanks.
All right, so although this is a special meeting and public comment is only taken on the subject of the special meeting, we do have a member of the public who would like to make a related question.
Of course it is. This is no different than we've approached this for the past three years, I believe. As a reminder to council, the budget's made up of two major components, the operating budget and the capital improvement plan. Oftentimes when we present the budget in the first meeting in June, there is time constraints in terms of how long it takes to present. And oftentimes the capital improvement program doesn't get the time it deserves in terms of explaining the proposed projects. So for the past three years, I believe we've separated the two and had an opportunity prior to the presentation of the budget overall in the first meeting in June for council to get a preview of the proposed capital improvement program. This is really a presentation item only, council is not being asked to make any decisions this evening related to the capital improvement program. We will review the same information and somewhat more summarized version on June 5th, when we go over the whole budget. But this is an opportunity for council to see a preview of a sort of a project by project proposal for the CIP.
I'm hearing no clamoring to remove anything from the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
We move now to the discussion item, review of proposed fiscal year 2024-25 capital improvement program. May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and the question from the member of the public elicited a response that was going to be my initial present, initial introduction to this item, so I won't repeat it. What I will do is turn it over to two staff members, Patrick Kerslake, David Issue from Public Works. As you all know, Patrick and David are the division managers of the Public Works Department and largely responsible for both putting together the proposed CIP, but also implementing the projects that are ultimately approved by council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick and David.
Good morning, we're excited to be here in front of all of you today to talk about the proposed capital improvement program for the upcoming fiscal year of 2425. This year, we've put a list of projects together that mostly focus on maintenance of existing infrastructure and assets that the town has and is responsible for. Some of you who are new here may not have seen the booklet that we presented in the past. We've kept the format that we've, we've followed in previous fiscal years. And it outlines all of the projects that we're proposing, the funding behind each project and an outlook over the next couple of years of what we're projecting in terms of a project list. These projects change from year to year depending on what the needs of the town are and what projects come to us through various sources. And the presentation that we're going to go through today with you will generally follow the format of the book. In the back of the book, you'll notice that there are project sheets for each project that's in the proposed capital improvement program for this year. And they give a little bit more background as to each project and what its purpose is and the funding behind each project. And as we go through these, we can stop and discuss them. And again, at the end, we can answer any questions you have or as we go along, however we best see fit. So David and I will start going through the PowerPoint presentation here. So we're going to start with recently completed and ongoing projects from this fiscal year, the fiscal year we're in, just to give a quick highlight of what we've been working on and what's in progress now. This is a big one that has stretched over multiple budget cycles, and it's the Hawthorne Utility Undergrounding District. The project is 100% done, there's a little bit of financial housekeeping that David and I are working on behind the scenes to close everything out, but all of the poles have been removed. And we're getting good feedback from everyone in the neighborhood. In fiscal year 2324, the current cycle that we're in, we had a variety of streets projects. And what was unusual about this fiscal year, street projects are that it was, they were more than we had done in the past. Just based upon a couple of different factors such as not getting bids from contractors and project designs taking a bit longer than we had expected. So we executed four different large street projects this year. Eastview Avenue rehabilitation was a very complex project up on Corinthian Island to rehab a very short section of street. And then we also had a pavement maintenance and rehabilitation project. There were actually two projects that treated about, I think around 20 street segments throughout town. And a smaller project that we also completed was the Spanish Trail roadway stabilization project, which entailed installing a retaining wall to buttress a section of street that was creeping due to some storm damage. And every year we do miscellaneous concrete and pavement repairs as needed throughout town. In our parks, we have the open space vegetation management program that David runs, and we'll talk about this more in a few minutes. But that is a program where we perform vegetation management projects and other type of maintenance in the over 250 acres of open space that the town owns. We also will talk about the Richardson Bay Sanitary District pond site acquisition and remediation project a little bit more later. But that's been something that's also ongoing for several fiscal years or cycles, excuse me. Another annual program that the Public Works Department administers is the storm drain rehabilitation program. And this year, the Railroad Marsh Basin Maintenance Project was fairly large and entailed removal of cattails and other biomass in the Railroad Marsh here behind Town Hall to maintain the marsh as a stormwater detention basin. We also have a project that's been in design to rehabilitate a variety of storm drain segments in the Bel Air neighborhood. And that's in design right now, we'll talk about that more in a few minutes. And we also completed a storm drain lining project that lined, I think between 10 and 15 segments of storm drain throughout town. Generally, projects through the parks and our facilities and other areas in town that don't fall into the drainage street or open space management category are called community projects. And we had a few this year, locker room remodel at the police department, and that's still in progress now. And we've also started a design for installing EV charging stations at Town Hall. And again, we'll go into that a little bit more soon. So as I explained earlier, we break our projects into three major categories. And in the CIP booklet, you'll be able to find the projects associated with each of these different categories. And like I said, this coming year, the proposed projects focus on maintenance, repair, and upgrades to our existing infrastructure. So we're first going to go over the street improvement projects proposed for this coming fiscal year. And this would be found, I can give you the page number. This would be on page eight of the booklet. And I'll just call everyone's attention to the blue highlighted rows on the bottom of the table here on the screen indicate that it's actually one project that's proposed with three different funding sources. A lot of our capital improvement programs, especially in regards to streets, have multiple funding sources that make up the funding that we use for construction and design, design and construction. So every year we have the bicycle and pedestrian improvement program. And that funds a variety of improvements, both to our existing pathways, trails, and other arteries that folks use around town. A new project this year, and again, we'll go through this a little bit more in depth, is the brick crosswalk rehabilitation project. Main Street seawall maintenance. And then one pavement rehab and maintenance project. And we actually will talk about that as well. We just opened bids a couple of weeks ago for this summer's project. So this is the associated capital project data sheet for the annual bike and pedestrian improvements program. And this can be found on page 16. This gives a little bit more of an outline as to what projects would fall into this category of this ongoing program. And we have it budgeted at $50,000 per year of Measure A transportation funds, and that's funding we get from the county Marin. I think we talked about this last year at the capital improvement program presentation and retreat. That over the years, the town installed a series of brick crosswalks at intersections from Mar West Street all the way through our downtown area. And what's unique about them is they're installed in Caltrans right of way. And the town elected to install them quite some time ago to beautify the downtown area. And as time has gone on, these crosswalks have started to degrade and age and need maintenance. And what staff has determined through our analysis is that replacing the crosswalks with brick would be a very labor intensive and expensive venture for the town. And it may be something that we want to look at as a group to determine if that's the type of material we want to put back in.
Um, yes, and I think over the years I have mentioned my support for an alternate material, especially stamped concrete, which can look remarkably the same as the bricks themselves.
And that's what we plan to come back to town council in the next, or after the beginning of this coming fiscal year with two design alternatives to review, so we can start to rehabilitate these crosswalks. And I've put funding out over the next several fiscal years so that we can do basically a few at a time each year to minimize impact financially and on the public when we rehabilitate these things.
Thank you.
And the next project David has a lot more background and involvement in, it's the Main Street Seawall Repairs. So the photo here, to refresh everyone's memory, is a section of Main Street between Beach Road and Bellevue Avenue on Corinthian Island. And this is actually a cantilevered section of roadway that used to be right, almost right where the area, right where the drop bridge that used to operate in this area hundreds of years ago was. And the concrete structure that's holding up the road is starting to deteriorate. And David is going to talk a little bit more about his plans for this area.
Yes, so for this project, right now, we're currently in the design phase. And previously, this bridge was never in the Caltrans inventory, meaning that we would not, we wouldn't be able to collect or apply for any Caltrans grants to repair it. So we successfully entered this into the Caltrans Bridge Inventory, it's been accepted. Caltrans comes in and does a yearly, a free yearly report and assessment, provides it to us. And then we take that assessment based on what they're, what what they're requesting that needs to be done to bring it up to at least, you know, safe standards. We can go out and apply for Caltrans grants to help pay for it. So right now, we are currently in the design. This in November of 2025, we'll be able to apply for a grant to basically pay for all of the improvements that need to happen to this bridge. And we're anticipating that it's going to be close to about 700,000, maybe five, six, up to 700,000 for the repairs in there. And this grant will pay for all, just about 90% of the grant with a 10% match just required from the town. So we will apply for this grant in, in November of 25 with construction in 2026. So we're real excited that, you know, we're able to save town a lot of money moving forward. And this, you know, putting this bridge, and we're looking at other bridges perhaps that we can add on to their plan so that we can apply for grants for repairs, especially along Paradise. But this one here, we should have planned, we should have the design completed this fiscal year, apply for the grant in November. Turnaround for the grants are pretty quick within 30 days, and then we go out for construction in the spring of 26.
So the next project is covered under our pavement maintenance and rehabilitation program, where every year we put out projects for bid that maintain our infrastructure, our roadway infrastructure. And we've been designing a project for the last couple of months that was just recently put out to bid and construction bids were opened just a few weeks ago. And this year, we're planning on treating, I believe, 10 segments of roadway. And these were actually the segments of roadway that were removed from last year's project. So we wanted to make sure that those didn't slip through the cracks, no pun intended, and to be able to get to these streets and keep them up to standard. And I, I'll confirm with, with David and Greg, but I believe we'll have a staff report at the next town council meeting for town council to consider awarding the project. What's a little bit unique, and I think most of you know this, that we oftentimes projects cross fiscal years. So we may be designing a project now for a coming fiscal year. And that's why sometimes there can be carryover depending on when the projects are advertised for construction or for bids, or when the construction actually starts. So what we've, just to clarify, what we've proposed for this coming fiscal year is a streets maintenance project that will be coming to town council for next meeting for you to consider awarding. So the next program, annual program that we carry out with the Department of Public Works is the Drainage Improvement Program. And this year we have, I believe, it looks, yes, we have three different projects that we're embarking in. One is an open cut project. So a lot of what we do in terms of rehabbing storm drain lines is trying to line, insert liners into the storm drain pipe so that we don't have to dig up the street. This is very popular in sanitary sewers where folks need to replace their sewers going from their house to the sewer main. And property owners don't want to dig up their existing sewer laterals because it can be expensive and very disruptive. So we try to do the same thing with our storm drains wherever possible to be able to rehabilitate them without opening up any trenching or anything like that. But this year, we had a variety of storm drain segments that could not be rehabbed via the trenchless method. So we have, I believe, around six, six storm drain lines, mostly focused in the Bel Air neighborhood that are going to be removed and replaced and upsized where necessary. So we've had a project that's been in design for the last couple of months to open all these, or to repair all these lines and replace them. And we intend on putting a project out to bid this summer that would be funded here. And we estimate the cost would be about $600,000. In addition to this, we also will be starting a design on a future project to rehab storm drain lines. And that's what the $75,000 is, is to cover design and analysis of the next group of storm drain lines that are eligible for, or that we have put on a list that need to be looked at. And finally, the storm drain trash capture device installation, David's going to talk about that. That's, do you want to go ahead and explain it?
Yeah, so the storm drain, small trash, trash capture devices is 100% funded through McStop. So they, they have come in here and analyzed some of the areas here in downtown that would benefit from a trash capture device in our existing infrastructure that we have at catch basins. So we're in the process of getting those installed here in the next couple of months. And in doing so, McStop is working with other municipalities here in Marin County to basically create one JPA that'll go around and actually monitor and clean these devices for the municipalities. So we're working with that, with McStop on that. And we also have a large trash capture device that McStop, we're working with McStop on. And that'll go down where the Main Street, again, on Main Street where the fountain is. And this is a large, very large capture device that again is funded 100% by Caltrans because of Tiburon Boulevard being a state highway. And that, that will be about a $900,000 project funded 100%. The only thing the town needed to fund was the last 65% of the design. So they also paid for 35% of the design as well. So we're in the process, we're going to go out with an RFP to get the final design completed. And then once we have that done, we coordinate with McStop to get the project out to bid and then constructed.
Please remind us what McStop is.
Oh, it's the Marin County Stormwater Pollution Protection Program.
It's a county program.
County program run by the county.
And it funds some of this.
McStop charges every municipality in Marin County certain amount based on population, and they run all of Marin County's stormwater programs.
They help maintain our compliance with state and federal requirements for clean water. So they've been a great resource for us and other municipalities within the county to help with these larger initiatives that have come down from the state, especially in regards to trash capture. And I think the good news for us in Tiburon is McStop did a lot of surveying of our storm drain infrastructure and only determined, I think it was just a handful, if one or two spots downtown that would require these devices because they weren't seeing a lot of litter and things like that going into our storm drains and into the bay. So downtown was an area where, that they decided we needed to put these trash capture devices in. And once the devices get installed, it's, it's a little trickier than just installing them and walking away. They need to be maintained during storm events and, and basically any type of litter or debris that's captured needs to be removed so that the systems can function properly. But we're very fortunate that we have only a few to implement. But the one that David mentioned down by the fountain is going to be pretty significant because the storm drain system that outfalls to the bay under Malibu Farm, it's a three or four foot diameter pipe essentially drains all of Tiburon Boulevard all the way up almost to Beach Road and to Mar West. So it's a pretty significant system and everything that ties into it.
Absolutely. And one other good thing that's going to come out of this project is they're going to replace our flap gate that's working or sometimes not working. So that will help with, it'll help with some of the flooding down there as well. So it's a great project, and again, funded by Caltrans.
If I could just jump in, I'd, I want to emphasize how significant this last project is, actually, this large trash capture device. And certainly council will, will learn more about it as, as the design progresses. But I want to just emphasize that this is going to be located literally in the Fountain Plaza area. And it'll be quite disruptive when, when the installation has to occur. And post-installation, and David and Patrick, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be a vault type structure that, you know, will have to be accessed periodically for cleaning, as they said. So it's, it's going to be very disruptive. We've, we've worked with all the designers to figure out, is there any other way we can do this or a different location? It just isn't possible because of the, I mean, the ideal location would be in the pavement in Main Street. But unfortunately, there's so many utilities already running down Main Street. It would be, there is no spot that this thing can fit. So anyway, we've been working really hard to minimize the impact of this, but, but as you will learn, when we start implementing, it is going to be quite a, both, you know, quite a project to get done, so.
And with respect to the storm drain rehabilitation in the Bel Air neighborhood, is there any coordination we're doing with the flood control district four? Because they've been talking about that stuff forever, right?
Yeah, we've been in communication with them on our project and a couple of other initiatives they're working on, just to make sure that there's continuity of, of communication so that we each know what's going on in the respective areas because it all affect, everything that's done there affects the other, so.
Great, thanks.
So the next category, and probably the category with the most projects this year are our community and miscellaneous projects. And on page 12, you can, in the booklet, you'll see the list of projects. And what we've done is broken it out into three different categories. Buildings and facilities, park facilities, and miscellaneous. And we'll go through these projects one by one, and we can explain, a lot of them are, or most of them are new, there are a few that you may already be familiar with. So what I'll do is go through each slide as we go down the list. So the first project that we're proposing is to do an accessibility evaluation and associated improvements at all of our facilities. So the town owns are the Town Hall, the Police Station, the Public Works Corporation Yard, and Derry Knoll, or the Ranch, and operates out of those buildings. So what we're proposing to do is to hire an accessibility specialist to go through all of our buildings to make sure that any upgrades that need to be made are recommended and performed in order to keep basically our town in compliance with our ADA transition plan. Correct. Yes, we have a lease agreement with, with. Correct. Yes, we have a lease agreement with, with Belvedere Tiburon Joint Recreation. Correct. The lease agreement spells out the, the responsibility of, of both the town and the ranch in regards to who's responsible for what. And we also own the uh Railroad Museum, the Donahue Building, but that's leased uh to the Belvedere Tiburon Landmark Society.
And are we still responsible for maintenance of those buildings?
That building, we are not responsible for the maintenance of, but we work with uh the Belvedere Tiburon Landmark Society for anything that comes up.
Thank you.
The next project that has been on the list, kind of, at least in a discussion uh for discussion, has been rehabilitation of the Public Works Corporation Yard. And I won't read this whole thing, but the Corporation Yard is, I think it's over 100 years old now. And it's what we believe to be beyond its useful life. And we want to start looking at bringing the facility up to current standards, either by reconstructing it or by making upgrades to the existing building. I'll bring your attention to a, there was a 2003 A-Bag report that noted that the Corporation Yard building was of a significant risk of uh structural collapse during a seismic event. And that's something that really concerns us, especially with a facility that's so critical to operating during any type of emergency response uh situation here in town. So over the years, some improvements have been made to the facility um in terms of cosmetics, like painting and replacing windows to, to keep the building preserved as best as possible. But beneath all that uh structurally, the facility has not undergone any upgrades. And over the years, uh, well, in 2008, actually, uh, previous administrations had hired an architect to go through and do a scope, a very initial scoping study to try to figure out what it would take to reconstruct the whole facility and uh improve circulation and make other improvements. The project did not go fo- uh forward and probably about five years ago, I think it's been now, uh, we started looking at, looking at the facility again in terms of uh what it would take to reconstruct it in current dollar amounts. And we had a circulation study done by uh Griffin Structures, so it was 2009. And several uh alternatives were developed, but the cost was over 15 million. So what we're looking to do is, is to try to figure out a way, uh, the, the town's been, we, we've saved money over the years. Uh, there's a um Public Works Corporation Yard Replacement or Rehabilitation Fund that I believe has three and a half million dollars saved in it. And from time to time, we transfer funds in to, to basically save up for doing something significant at this facility in the future. And we recognize that we need to do something. Uh, but the price tag of 15 million is, is very high um for a small town to, to shoulder.
How large is this structure again?
It is a, around a 3,000 square foot building. And I'll go back to the main picture here. And a uh about an acre, abilities about an acre and a half site with carports that house all the vehicles. So there's a the photo here is, it's an office and shop space down, workshop space down below. And then behind it, you can just see a little bit of the carport. And that's where all the equipment and trucks for, owned by the town and used by the Public Works Department are stored.
Uh, but the 2003, you know, it's really concerning that a regional agency that was looking at um the capability of responding to emergencies in 2003 talked about the danger of collapse of one of the primary responders in an emergency in our town. I um, when they talked about it, they weren't just talking about the office building, right? Weren't they also talking about the structures in which equipment is stored?
I believe so.
Yeah. And, and so is there an opportunity now to sort of stage actual improvements? So even instead of waiting for the reserve to be big enough to do it at one shot, we can do it up a prioritized project at a time?
And we've looked at that, uh, and, and we're happy to discuss it more to try to figure out what we can do with what we have now, or do it in a phased approach, uh, like you were just suggesting to shore up the existing structures uh in a faster or in a more expeditious manner.
Yeah, I know you can only do what you can do, but it, it, it seems to me that all of us should have a sense of urgency in getting this done.
So this year, what we've, I, I've put in the budget is um $120,000 and, and what we've uh Greg, David and I have discussed is looking at even the potential for a design build because what we've, over the years, what we've gone back and forth about is trying to determine whether it would be more of uh efficient or more economical to just simply reconstruct the whole facility rather than try to rehab an existing facility and, and to try to figure out what the best use of uh the funding we have is. Um, so this year, we're going to look at everything again and figure out if we can do, figure out how we can use our uh money to take care of the facility.
With respect to the reserve fund, we don't systematically or um formulaically contribute to it. We've just been doing it opportunistically, right?
That's correct. Probably over the past, certainly before my time um started, uh, and we've made some contributions to it in the time that I've been here. I think it's uh, Patrick may have gotten it just a little bit under. I think it's closer to 4 million. I think it's about 3.8 million or 3.9 million in that fund now, you know, and Patrick identified the problem, but we know that's not enough to do what we probably need to do uh in terms of reconstructing the entire complex. So we're hoping this year we can narrow it down a little bit more until, wha- what can we do with, with the money we have? Um, and where should we be focusing our energy? The last significant study we did was the Griffin Structures Study, and I believe it was, it was while I was here. So it was after 2016. Um, and that was more of a space needs assessment. It was really looking at the operation and figuring out how much square footage that, you know, the, the support building should be. How much square footage do we actually need uh for the vehicles and storage? Um, and also you may or may not know, but we also have a fueling station um on that property that's used by uh not just the town of Tiburon, but currently used by the Tiburon Fire District. I believe it's still used by Richardson Bay Sanitary District and the school district for fueling their vehicles. Um, you know, so the question, you know, one of the questions is, do we, do we keep that? And if we do, do we rebuild it? Um, you know, so there's a lot of options there. We know that the overall cost to do it in one big shot is extreme and um so this year, we're really trying to narrow down, what can we do with the money we have um and be as uh impactful as we can with that funding. So.
But I mean, you say it's extreme, but if a building's 100 years old, if we can spend 15 million bucks for 100 years, that's not crazy. The question is, how do we finance it? Has it like, is there a process where we should start thinking about issuing debt, you know, or issuing a bond to try to do that paid over time? Cause like, you know, philosophically, having future residents pay for something that's going to be around for 100 years doesn't seem crazy to me.
Just right. No, and that, you know, you bring up a good point. Um, and it's something you'll hear a little bit more about uh on June 5th, when we talked about the budget, i- is that, you know, that I have said many, many times in my time here that the town is fortunate to be essentially debt free. Uh, we are one of the few municipalities that has never issued or for a long time has not issued long-term debt in the form of bonds for anything. Um, the, and as you all know, the town is in, in the, in the midst of a couple of different long-term planning efforts, one related to parks and one that we're just kicking off related to Tiburon Boulevard Infrastructure. It is likely that both of those efforts will produce suggestions um that, that some of which may be expensive um and beyond the means of the town to pay as you go. And, and the town has been very fortunate to implement most of its capital improvement programs over the years on a pay as you go basis. Um, particularly for things like pavement and drainage. Uh, but to contemplate a project this size or for instance, a parks project of multi, you know, any park improvement project that's multi millions of dollars, the town will need to consider alternative means of revenue um beyond just general fund revenue. Um, and you know, there are many, many options and I'd be happy to uh at some point, schedule a, you know, a special meeting just to talk about, you know, what, what's the menu of revenue generating um options out there for municipalities? And there's, there's, you know, there's a, there's a whole host of them parcel taxes, additions to the sales tax. Um, you know, and, and the list goes on. So.
That, that, that's a great idea to educate us a little bit. Thank you.
So the next two projects are carryovers from the current fiscal year. Um, one project was not started and this uh uh, the other project is ongoing. So the Tiburon Police Department, uh, we have a locker room reconstruction project that was uh approved in the current year's CIP. And this coming fiscal year, we're looking to continue the project and it would entail remodeling the women's locker room. So the men's side is complete and the women's side would be started uh this coming fiscal year. And that's what's proposed. And the second project was never started, but is proposed to be on the capital improvement program for next year. And a lot of what we're seeing in our facilities, now that they're getting to the 20 plus year mark is a lot of maintenance type items are coming up. Flooring is nee- needing to be replaced. Uh, finishes, things like that, that have started to show their wear and tear. There'll be a couple more projects related to our facilities uh coming up in a minute. Back in 2000, well, probably within the last five or six years, the town installed a solar array at the police department through a PPA. So essentially it was a project that was performed at no cost to the town, which was a great perk. But unfortunately during the design, the, there was no waterproofing. Uh, basically the, the structure was not installed to keep the lower parking lot dry. And we thought that the addition of solar panels would help to shed rain and to protect the lower parking lot. But it's actually had a worse impact on the lower lot. As in where, when it rains now, water is focused through every seam in the solar array and focused down on all the cars and personnel. So this project would entail uh essentially creating a roof underneath the existing solar array to keep the whole lower parking lot 100% watertight during any rain event. Again, another facility project at Town Hall and this is a project that would perform repairs to the exterior, mostly in regards to siding and wood type uh trim and things like that that are experiencing weather and age-related degradation. The, the next project is the Town Hall Facility EV Charging Stations. And you'll see that there are two different projects uh to install EV charging stations at the Town Hall. This is called the Fleet project. And the reason why I labeled it as the Fleet Project is the Town Hall has a fleet of EV vehicles that currently have chargers set up. And when the library reconstruction project happened, we moved our vehicles to the location there and now. And the lot is actually owned by AC Ventures. So we, we now have everything set up on the side of the building that you see in the photo. And what we'd like to do is install permanent charging stations that are in compliance with ADA and basically upgrade everything so that this whole side of the building functions a lot better. Uh, the circulation around both the library and Town Hall have, we, we've experienced the changes in circulation now with the relocation of Zelensky Park and the parking lot on Mar West for both facilities. So we're looking to install EV chargers as well as a sidewalk that would allow folks that are walking up to the Town Hall Building on the Tiburon Boulevard side to be able to get around to the back without having to walk in the parking lot. So essentially what it does is it would formalize, and I've got a better picture in another slide, it would formalize this whole, this whole area that's now just kind of gravel and cobblestones. And the public EV charging stations is a project that we're still working on developing the scope, but it would essentially entail the addition of public EV charging likely on this side of the parking lot. And we're working with PG&E to apply and receive any type of funding that they have available. Uh, PG&E actually will fund infrastructure improvements all the way, I believe, to, to the meter. So essentially whatever um whatever type of electrical connection we would need for our proposed chargers or any upgrades on the PG&E side would be covered at their cost. So what we're coming up with is a location and a layout of public charging stations on the far side of this lot. And this is something that we're working with AC Ventures on to be able to provide EV charging stations for the public in this lot. And w- we're looking at different layouts and where all the existing electrical infrastructure is now to be able to best lay this out. So we would propose to put on the previous project I explained, the town fleet chargers here and public chargers on this side. Have anything else? I think that was it with this project.
I would just add to that um on the, for the fleet chargers, we're not, we're not anticipating anything special, meaning these would be um level two chargers that you'd install at your home. Um, but we could, we don't have any need for any particular rapid charging for the fleet here at Town Hall. For the public chargers though, we are, we are trying to focus on the possibility of installing DC fast chargers um on the public side of the lot. Uh, it's, it's dramatically more expensive and requires a lot more power. Um, so we're, we're, we're hopeful that we'll be able to do that. Um, but we are, we are working with an engineer and as Patrick said, PG&E along with AC Ventures um to try to, if we're able to do it, install the most modern um future-proof uh chargers that we can possibly put uh on, on the public side.
So another positive outcome of the reconfiguration of the library and Town Hall site has been the addition of this New Zelensky Park and Civic Plaza that's become very popular for special events and, and really is getting a lot of uh use and, and positive feedback to us. But what we found after the project uh was complete is that we really have a need for wayfinding signage on this whole campus. Um, there are often folks that show up at Town Hall thinking that it's the library and I'm sure maybe vice versa. So what we, this project is geared to do is to look at both facilities and to come up with a program that is consistent across both facilities and allows clear and concise messaging to everybody that's using the property as to where everything is and uh have it all match and be compliant with uh ADA. So this is both for the analysis and for any type of material that we would need to buy and the installation. So I'm gonna hand it over to David. He's gonna talk about our open space uh management program.
Alright, so every year we have the Open Space Management Program, which covers um the vegetation management of the 250 plus acres that the town owns. Last year we had, you know, our experiment with the goats. Um, it for the first couple of weeks went pretty well, but then after that we had some problems. Um, I've been in close contact with our goat herder. Um, it, it, I believe that they have solved that problem. Um, uh, they've issued a new vaccine for their goats and they're prepared to come back and try it one more time. So I'll, I'm gonna be
Can you just review what was the issue with the goats again?
Oh, um, the, the type of French broom that we have here in Tiburon was a little too toxic for them compared to French broom that they were eating in other areas of California. So they were overeating too much toxin in their stomach, which was causing them to get ill and, and die. Um, so they've, they've up uh their vac- Um, so they've, they've up, uh, their vaccines and, uh, they're ready to come back again and, and give it a try. So I'll be working on, on another RFP, um, here in the next month. Issue that out and, um, we have a couple of areas already, um. Marked for where they can come back here in the fall and, and try it out again. He's going to bring a smaller herd. And, uh, we'll go from there, but we are using also mechanical equipment, which really speeds up the process. We were able to, last minute after the goats pulled out, we were able to, uh, get a firm out there that. Basically took care of. Almost twenty acres worth of open space. In under a hundred twenty thousand dollars and in about three weeks. So it was pretty quick. Mastication, cleaning, removal. So we've got them in our back pocket as well. So it's going to be a combination of both. Goats and mechanical means moving forward, uh, this fall.
And, and what is the difference cost?
So for the goats, we are looking at, uh, they have a minimum, it's a minimum fifty thousand dollars that they. Worth of work that they need. Uh, our work is typically right around, uh, we spend right around. Two hundred thousand dollars between a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year now. Uh, following the open space management, short term open space management program that we have, the five year program. And with the mechanical, uh, they are pretty much very similar, a little cheaper than the goats, but quicker. Uh, so their, their cost, uh, if you compare both of them, uh, they're pretty equal. We get a little bit more done, uh, with the, uh, mastication and the mechanical versus the goats and, and quicker as well. Uh, because with the goats, once they're gone, we have to also get someone behind them to do the cleanup work. Uh, so it's a, it's a, it's double effort, but, um, with Tiburon. Uh, the type of species that we have, especially with a lot of the French broom. They'll eat the flowers and they'll eat the leaves, but the twigs and the branches will stay. A lot of the time, so we have to get, uh, manual folks out there to go out there and take the brush out. But we're finding some areas here in Tiburon where there's not much French broom, just a lot of grass, uh, that they can go in there and clean up.
But the use of goats then is what a community preference?
It's been a community preference and, uh, we'd like to kind of diversify, get the goats in one area that they can go clean up because it's not that much money. You know, about fifty thousand for about almost seven to eight acres worth of grazing. And then get our mechanical folks in areas where the goats can't go and kind of hit it from both ends. Get more work done.
Historically, we had used hand crews, uh, basically to manually remove the broom or any type of other invasive species. And that was the, the general practice before, when David and I started. And then we started looking at alternate means, basically to, to get as much done as we could with the money we had. Both because it was harder to find the crews to do the manual removal work and because their output had, uh, had diminished. And, and we weren't getting the type of production we had seen in the past and clearing these large properties.
Thank you.
And the other thing I'll mention is for clarification. Is with the open space management program, you'll see that there's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars budgeted for this fiscal year. And what I've done is I, I've combined both the open space vegetation management projects as well as, uh. Some funding to do work on our fire roads. We didn't do any work on them this year. But we anticipate with storms that there is the need for going out and doing some grading on some of these areas that get. Heavy erosion and things like that to make sure that they're passable. So this slide essentially, uh, covers the open space management program, both vegetation, fire road maintenance and things like that. The next project is a pretty small project. This is the small section of Old Rail Trail just past the Lyford Lot as you're coming inbound to Tiburon. And there's a wooden retaining wall that's around. It's around a hundred feet long that's failing. And this would entail replacement of that retaining wall. We don't anticipate any disturbance to the existing trees or vegetation and we don't have anything significant planned in terms of. Change to circulation or layout. It, it, it's just replacing what's here, uh, to make sure that it, it. Stay safe and is structurally sound.
The next project is the Parks Master Plan that, uh, this may actually, this month, uh, marks one year anniversary with us starting this project. We've done a lot of work, a lot of community outreach, a lot of workshops, a lot of meeting with subcommittees. Uh, WRT recently presented to Town Council in, in March of this year. And during that meeting, the project took. A different course. Instead of having plan, a plan out there that defines what goes where. Town Council's direction was to provide some type of, um, framework, framework on where. Projects can go based on zoning, money, um, kind of keep it open so that in the future. Um, we can come to Town Council. And, uh, with different projects and based on a decision tree where it can go. So. Uh, we don't have a defined plan that we have to stick with. It keeps it very open based on the different types of zones out there. So based on that, our project is. We had to, uh, extend the deadline because there's some more work to do. So we, uh, anticipate this project coming back to Town Council. To adopt sometime in the fall of this year, September. Tomorrow we have a fairly, uh, important meeting at the, uh, Special Post Commission Meeting tomorrow. Where WRT will be presenting their first, uh, look at how this plan. Uh, transformed based on the March, uh, Town Council Meeting. And moving forward. This, uh, uh, June and July, we will have some more, um, workshops. And, uh, subcommittee meetings to come back to Town Council in August for a presentation. Uh, of where they're at, go back to post in September. For a recommendation and then bring it back to Town Council for a final approval.
Just a reminder, as part of the conversation at TC last time when WRT presented. Uh, we asked that part of the consideration of their recommendation or list of priorities. Of location of activities, um, include impacts on neighbors and, and that's kind of implicitly. Involved in zoning, but because of some of the geographical peculiarities, zoning doesn't totally cover it.
Absolutely. They will be looking at all of that as well. Correct.
David, one question, there, there, um, there's been a project that I think was approved. Um, a few years ago around the Greenwood Cove Beach Restoration. Um, I know the town's not contributing funds to that. Where does something like that live?
So that, that project.
Or what is the project tracking for, for a project like that live?
Oh, the, the tracking, uh, as far as. Who is running the project, the fund or how it falls with, with this Parks Master Plan? So. Uh, the county is actually working with our consultant with that project and it is being incorporated. Within this master plan. Um, we have a meeting next week, a coordination meeting because, uh. The, the, uh, county, uh, through all of the state agencies. Are requesting some additional pathways to the rest, to the restored beach that we're going to work on right now that the county is working on. So our consultant, WRT is working with the county and incorporating all of, all of the elements with the beach restoration within this master plan.
Thank you.
Well, um, good news with the RBSD pond site restoration, we, we have the deed, the town owns it. About a week and a half ago, we received the final closure plan from the state. One thing that we were waiting on were some of the pollutants that the state was looking at. Worst case scenario would have been that we would have had to remove one to two feet. Of the bottom of that pond of all the ponds. Well, the state came back and said, you don't have to do that anymore. Which is good news for us. Uh, the, the, the levels were low enough and acceptable by the state. So you don't have to do that. That saved us a lot of money. It will save us a lot of.
Levels of what?
Uh, it, um, it was a pollutant, uh. With all of the waste product that they, uh, that would go inside, uh, that was within the water there. I don't know the exact name of the pollutant, but it was a, a very low level. Now I'll get that to you. So we are in the middle of our design for this project and we are. We asked a consultant to provide us with, um, two bids or two types of, uh. A base bid that restores that whole area, grades it, removes the fence, gets it done. And a bid alt that would just basically remove the barbed wire, fill the ponds and, uh. Have, pretty much be a holding pattern until we decide what we want to do with the area. So we should have these, uh, plans in, hopefully in about another three weeks. And, uh, we can go out and, and, uh, bid, uh, the, uh, project and see what, what kind of, uh. Proposals we get in from the contractors and then bring it to Town Council, uh, to move forward with.
Uh, clarify a little bit, biz for restoration, what is restoration?
Oh, basically, uh. Remove the rest of the water that is in the ponds, remove some of the drainage structures that will no longer be needed or upgrade them. Uh, remove the fencing, the barbed wire, fill the ponds with, uh. Uh, soil and grade the site so that it's a gentle slope from the trail up to the, you know, the, the top of the bank there.
And then the alternate is to refill the ponds?
The alternate would be to refill the ponds, fill them up, not with, not with water, not with water. Fill them with dirt.
With, with soil.
With soil. And yes, a lesser project, just because, um. We want to make sure that they're flat, uh, and then it doesn't become a marsh or a wetland and then the town will not be able to do anything there.
So, so what, the end product of refilling the ponds. As compared to restoration is that it wouldn't be open area for people to walk on?
Well, we would still, the, yes, that is correct. It'd be a, a, a smaller project to temporarily fill the ponds with dirt. And, uh, wait and see what the Parks Master Plan comes up with, um, moving forward. So we don't just do something there, spend, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars and then in a year and a half from now go in there and destroy all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was really just to give council two, two alternatives. For closing the site. Essentially, we need to comply with the closure plan, which is to remove all the water. We will, uh, either option will be removing all the water, removing any. Infrastructure that's there, concrete drainage. There is a, a significant storm drain that crosses the site that going to the bay. Uh, that we need to incorporate. The base bid will be a more expensive project and as David said, essentially would grade. We would be bringing in significant amounts of fill and we'd be grading the site as a gentle slope from the lower side. Um, i- if you, if you think of yourself walking in, when you just go past the RBSD site, there's a retaining wall to your left. Um, as the, the paved path splits to the left and goes around McKegney, there's a, there's a retaining wall there. Um, the first, the base bid will be removing that retaining wall, essentially grading the site from that level up. To what you see in the picture here closest to you, uh, as sort of a gentle slope. Um, that's a, you know, fairly significant project. We wanted to at least. Look at the option of. Let, let's not spend that money now because that doesn't change it to anything other than a graded slope and we're not going to install irrigation and, you know, it's not going to be irrigated grass at that point. Um, we wanted to give council the option of a lesser project that simply. Complies with the state closure plan. Remove the water, remove the infrastructure, fill the ponds flat. Take the barbed wire down, but probably leave the existing fence there until council decides what they'd like to do with that site. Uh, council will have the option of going either direction, um, when we get the bids, uh, but we just didn't want to present one option. Uh, and particularly if it's going to be the most expensive option, so.
Thank you.
The next project here is a continuation of what the broadband fiber network project. Right now, uh, you know, we've been working with Caltrans for over a year. Uh, as you know that they are working on their shop project that will repave, uh, Tiburon Boulevard. And part of that project included environmental work that Caltrans was going to, had to perform. And with that project, we had asked Caltrans if they can include this broadband project in their environmental. Well, it never happened. Uh, we just kept getting the, the runaround by Caltrans. But they are working with us now, uh, fairly closely. Um, we have a consultant on, on our team. That is working on our SEQA. SEQA for the town are working closely with Caltrans. Caltrans will expedite, uh, this SEQA work. Um, will also expedite an encroachment permit that they will hand over to us, uh, hopefully by March of next year. With a design completed, environmental completed, uh, for this broadband where we can go out and. Bid the project ourselves, see what kind of bids we come up that come our way. And, uh, they'll also include this project with their shop project. As a bid alternate, so that if we don't, if we go out to bid and we do, we do not like the prices we, uh, uh, receive. We can see what kind of prices we get from Caltrans when they bid their project. So right now, um, we do have a Lata grant, it was a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. We've only spent close to about forty thousand dollars of it right now with some preliminary design work. But that one eighty will cover that we received from Lata will cover the rest of the environmental and also the rest of the design. Uh, for this project with perhaps some leftover money if it does move forward. Either through the town solely or with, um, Caltrans that we can spend money to see if we can get an ISP provider. Uh, that can come in, into town. So it's a, it's an exciting project. Um, I'm glad that we have direction now. We are moving forward. We have. LSA who is working on the environmental portion of this, uh, very good company. Uh, has worked closely with Caltrans on, on a lot of these, uh, broadband projects. And, um, I've seen it already move forward leaps and bounds in the last month. Uh, through their environmental process, SEQA process with Caltrans. Um, so we should have an update, uh, for Caltrans or for Town Council sometime in the fall. Where we're at currently with, with the SEQA work, but we anticipate completing everything by. I want to say at least the environmental portion by January of twenty twenty five and then design work completed. We're working on design right now, uh. Together with, uh, the environmental and have an encroachment permit in hand by March of next year. That means plan specs. And permit in hand that we can go out and bid.
Um, so just to follow, this is, this is pretty exciting. In actuality, so people, um, don't have, uh, great expectations, this project. Uh, will not necessarily bring faster broadband to individual houses. Um, right? Still, that will be a last mile that the customer will be responsible. For no matter who the ISP is.
That is correct. So this will bring the backbone, the, the large conduit of, from Highway one oh one to downtown. Uh, the good thing that'll come with this project is that once this project moves forward and it's built. Uh, we'll, Caltrans will be able to synchronize all their signals and upgrade their signal detection to. New advanced standards, uh, that they, detection standards that, that are out now. So it'll help. Alleviate a lot of the traffic issues if they can coordinate all their signals and this is very big. Project, uh, if they can do that, if we can put this in, they'll be able to have all their signals sync together. Also opens up the doors for different types of internet service providers out there than come and say, oh wow, we have a junction box to. The opening of, let's just say Hawthorne neighborhood. They can come in there at that point and, and. Work, uh, work with the town in, in utilizing some existing conduits if any are there or installing the conduits. And provide high speed internet to the neighborhoods.
Well, yeah, ju- just, uh, to back up, the possibility of having coordinated signals is. A part of this, I was going to ask, that's pretty exciting. But in any case, um, there, there is an expectation that once that middle mile is laid. Uh, whoever the new service provider. Potentially is, would carry the expense of taking it from middle mile up the neighborhoods to the houses. Is that? A, a reasonable expectation?
That is correct. Yeah, I think it's important to just remind council where you left this with staff. Um, so just to back up a little bit, a couple of years ago, using ARP funds and we'll talk a little bit, very briefly about American Rescue Plan Funds at the very end. Here, um. Council, uh, paid for a broadband strategic plan that, which was completed. Phase one of that plan, if, if council were to implement phase one, th- this is phase one, laying, laying a, potentially laying a, a. Phase one of that plan, if if council were to implement phase one, th- this is phase one, laying, laying a potentially laying a a pipeline uh conduit down to Brown Boulevard that would have fiber optic cable in it that could be built off of. Uh, subsequent to the acceptance of that plan, council earmarked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARP funds to achieve two things. One is to design the inst-, you know, the, the project of installing conduit. And the second part of that allocation was to work with a consultant on determining whether there were potential ISP providers that would want to build off that network. Th- that is as far as council has has directed staff. There is, at this point, there's no funding for completing this project. Um, it's not included in the Caltrans project. We don't anticipate Caltrans um paying for the installation of this conduit. Uh, so I just want to be super clear that that what what council has approved up till now is essentially plans and specs for a project and hiring a consultant to uh test the waters for ISP providers. Um, so at the completion of this, uh, you know, you'll have a set of plans and specs. We could put it out to bid and 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 see how much it would cost. We suspect it'll be a multimillion dollar uh project uh to construct. Um, the other note on the AR ARP funds is, as David said, subsequent to council author or earmarking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this phase, we received the latter grant to basically pay for that exact scope of work. So um you earmarked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we then got a grant to do that work. So at this point, we haven't expended any ARP, any of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARP funds on this project, and we believe we won't have to um because the grant is sufficient to get us through the work that council has already authorized, and we'll touch very briefly on that at the end of the presentation, so.
Thank you. I'm, I, I hope these questions, they're useful for us. I hope they're not tracking off your presentation. Thank you.
All right, this is the uh another real exciting project, the Tiburon Boulevard Safety Study. Uh, we recently uh came before town council at the last meeting to award the project to Parametrics Inc. Um, we are in the process of having the agreement uh fully uh signed and executed, and uh this project here will will, you know, basically, parametrics will be working with uh town staff, Belvedere uh staff um on coming up with uh, you know, what, what infrastructure deficiencies we have here, what's causing the traffic, uh, how we can alleviate uh the issues that we see on Tiburon Boulevard, Russell Glen, uh Paradise Drive, and and what's causing some of these issues here and and uh come up with a roadmap to help solve um, you know, our our traffic issues that we have. So we're just getting started here. Uh, we anticipate uh full speed ahead here in the next couple of weeks with uh parametrics and their data collection. And in their timeline and their presentation, they'll be coming back to town council three times with uh updates on where we're at uh, you know, with this project. So we have more information uh to town council here this fall when they come to town council for an update. But uh we should be moving forward uh full speed ahead in the next couple of weeks.
So the next slide is also can be found on page six of the booklet. And this slide outlines all of the different funding sources for the capital improvement plan. And it's like I explained in the beginning, it's a variety of sources, uh both internal and external. The the um lines here that say GF in front of them are general fund or come from the general fund. And the others come from the state and the county. Then at the bottom, there's a subtotal or subtotals of each category and the proposed expenditures for each. So for streets, it's one point seven million, drainage, seven hundred and thirty five thousand and community and miscellaneous projects, one point eight million. So the total proposed CIP for this coming fiscal year is around four point two million dollars. And then in, in the booklet, in the financial summary, the breakdown of each uh each type of project and the associated funding is in there as well, just for a little bit more detail. And Greg's going to talk a bit more about fund reserves.
Yeah, this is gonna, uh just gonna be very brief on this. Um, as council may, may know, that town maintains basically three categories of what we call reserve funds. Um, the first two fall under general fund reserves, and that's split into two subcategories, policy restricted and discretionary set asides. Um, but for the purposes, uh council should know though that essentially all you, you, whether it's policy restricted or a discretionary set aside, it's, it's essentially still a general fund reserve, meaning council could choose to use that funding um more or less for any purpose it it sees fit. Um, the second cat, general category is called restricted fund reserves, and these are are not um uh the council may not use these for any other use um than than what the fund um is intended for. This typically, the restrictions are typically um fall back to where the source of funding is. So for instance, state gas tax um a reserve fund, uh S, SB, I I get them all wrong, SB one, RMRA, there's, there's a variety of sources of funding that are restricted. When we look at uh a history of fund reserves, uh you'll maybe recognize this slide. Um, we, we try to track, you know, the ups and downs of fund reserves and and what this slide shows is essentially uh those two categories. So the middle, the light blue line that that wiggles back and forth is the combination of general fund reserve. So that's both policy restricted and discretionary set asides combined. So that is your total general fund reserves is the light blue line in the middle. The darker line on the bottom is the total reserves that are restricted, uh and this is probably fifteen different funds combined. The green line on top is simply the, the two lines below combined, so it's total fund reserves. So the green line on top is your total fund reserves. The middle blue line is your general fund reserves, and the bottom line is your restricted reserves. Uh, and you'll see uh over the past few years, uh we, you know, we have a, we are generally spending down reserves uh to a certain extent. Um, it's not unusual to have an up and down. This goes back to what I said earlier, which is the town has no debt. So we pay for all of these capital projects, more or less on an as you go basis. Um, and it's not unusual to have a several years of spending and then somewhat of a hiatus and most will generally build up reserves sometimes and then spend again. Um, what I, what I will note that in the past couple of years, there have been some anomalies um that are ex- uh making this a little more extreme, and the biggest one is the Martha property. Um, so that, both the blue and green line essentially are showing the effect of two million dollars a potential two million dollar contribution to the Martha property. Um, so if, if that had not happened, both the blue line in the middle and the green line uh it would be in the, in the last two years, the fiscal year twenty four and fiscal year twenty five, both of those data points would be two million dollars higher. Um, so that, that's probably the single biggest uh anomaly uh unrelated to capital projects that we're seeing here.
And 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 if the Martha property doesn't need all two million dollars, then this would be adjusted
Correct.
upward.
Yep, this is, this represents sort of worst case scenario, that that we expend that whole two billion dollars. I will note that this does not include ARP funds. Um, we've never um included the ARP funds in our general fund reserves. We, we track that in a separate fund balance uh so that it doesn't skew the numbers basically uh in in strange ways. So again, this is very, very high level uh look at fund reserves. Um, and uh it's not unusual for um you know, Patrick and David just went through a whole lot of projects. It's not unusual for us to not complete all those projects, and for one reason or another, we don't do one or two or or uh sometimes a big project comes in less or more. Um, you know, so again, these are predictions, particularly in the last, uh for the last two data points. It's not unusual for the, when we get the actuals, for the news to be a little bit better. Um, but this is sort of if everything were spent as intended and what our estimates are for the end of this fiscal year.
Uh, so, so I'm just, just a general clarification. Uh, sometimes people talk about um surplus, budget surpluses. But really, whether you have a surplus or not depends on how far in the future uh you're looking at projects and whether they're funded or not. So if you have a surplus in one year, it doesn't mean there aren't future projects that may use that money?
That's right. Um, so again, this, that's a, it's actually a good point. So the, one of the ways that the town has generated increases in fund reserves over the years is that um when we look at the operating budget, uh the town routinely produces an operating surplus at the end of the year. And and that, it's either one of two things or a combination of two things. Either revenues come in higher than expected or expend, expenses are less than budgeted. Uh, and it's that combination of those two factors that creates your operating surplus in any given year. Uh, it's not unusual for the, we, we budget, I budget, and the town has budgeted for many years very conservatively. Um, particularly on the revenue side, meaning we anticipate, when anticipated revenues normally come in sometimes significantly higher than budgeted, and it's not unusual for expenditures to be moderate, modestly less than budgeted. Um, there have been years where we've produced million dollar surpluses or even over a million dollar surpluses. I think what, what I'm seeing is over the last few years, um that, that gap is narrowing a bit, and to expect million dollar surpluses and moving forward is probably unrealistic. Um, and that the surpluses we'll see from operations will be more in the hundreds of thousands of dollar range as opposed to million dollar range. Um, and we'll talk more about that on June fifth when we look at revenues in particular, and I was talking to one of the council members earlier today that you know, what I'm starting to see is our, we've experienced the past three or four years, a fairly I wouldn't say dramatic, but a a robust increase in general fund revenues, and that's been a combination of a couple of factors. One, super conservative budgeting through the COVID period because we didn't understand how COVID was really going to affect the town's finances, and it did not affect it as badly as we expected. At the same time, as you all know, we've, we've experienced over the past four years, uh uh almost an unprecedented level of econo- economic development activity in downtown with the new restaurants. Um, so the rebound from COVID in conjunction with the opening of uh numerous new businesses over the past three or four years has generated significant increases in sales tax revenue and transient occupancy tax. We're starting to see that flatten out, and um I I don't expect we will be able to rely on that uh robust increase in those uh economic related taxes uh in the future. So we'll be, we'll sort of be back to where uh most municipalities are, which is relying on that steady incremental increase in property taxes. Uh, that is the bulk of our income. Uh, we'll talk more about that on June fifth when we look at revenues in particular. Um, but to your point, um we, we talk about unallocated or un- un- unrestricted reserves, that the town does have a policy that says that it'll maintain a minimum of twenty five percent of general uh of the operating budget in in reserves. Um, and that represents about three, just over three million dollars to, and you'll, you'll see this in numbers on June fifth. But today, I would say the town probably has five million dollars in that un- un- unallocated general fund reserve. So probably a million and a half to two million over the minimum policy amount. And that's shrunk, that that has shrunk considerably over the past few years. Um, just a few years ago, uh that would have been closer to eight or nine million dollars of, of general fund reserves that were not allocated in any way.
Yeah, I, I think the point I was trying to clarify is that when there is a surplus, it doesn't mean there's a bag of money looking for a home. It really depends on on, on what um time interval you're looking at, because there are always projects proposed for which funding has not been identified.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If, if I can make this a quick point on our um finance detail, looking out a few years, it shows the projected revenue we have, at least in in uh regards to the capital improvement program and what we anticipate the value of the construction projects proposed, at least for the main programs uh in regards to pavement, storm drains and open space. Uh, and the commitment that's been made to fund those programs. So that can help to paint the picture as to what we're predicting and how the um, how the balances of those accounts will be affected, looking out a few years.
Yeah, thank you. I, I only brought it up because people who advocate for one expensive capital improvement or another will say to me, but the town has a surplus, and I think it's important to look at it in a bigger interval than the current year budget.
Absolutely. Um, I do have one more slide, and it is about ARP, and and I'll just briefly touch on it. Um this is a, a very colorful, uh but I, I just wanted to get council sort of up to date on, on ARP funding. So a reminder that uh the town was allocated about two point one seven three million dollars of American Rescue Plan funds. Um, several years ago, the allocation came in in two tranches, as they say, one, one, half one year and half another. Um, this lists in chronological order, I believe, the, the allocations slash earmarks that council has made related to ARP funds. And the yellow represents projects that are complete, basically. Um, the green represents projects that are uh still in progress. And um I, I have two in blue because they're, they're a little bit slightly unusual. One is the broadband phase one project, which I already just, I described a little bit. You'll see that um council had earmarked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that um project. We've expended zero. And as I described, the, the latter grant that we have received covers the entire scope of work that council had earmarked the money for. Um, so we don't expect any expenditures um for that particular scope of work. Um, the next item, the C level rise consulting. Sometime a couple of years ago, council earmarked a hundred thousand dollars for this. We have not, we haven't done any work on this at all. Um, for the purposes of this calculation, uh we're, we're assuming we will spend that money. Um, but that remains to be seen. The couple of different things here is the, the, the original earmark from council for the RBSD ponds was eight hundred thousand dollars. With the purchase of the pond and the engineering work, we've already completed. We've already spent about seven hundred thousand dollars of that. We anticipate, w- we don't know how much the construction to close the ponds will be, um and that's again, another reason why we're giving you two options through the plan and spec phase. Um, but let's say it's three hundred thousand more dollars. That, that's going to be a couple hundred thousand more than you've actually earmarked. Um, we, we haven't come to council yet to, for you to tell us how you, how you want to fund that additional money. For the purposes of this spreadsheet, I've assumed you're going to spend ARP money on that. Um, also, the other anomaly is the Parks Master Plan. You originally had earmarked three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy eight for that. We've, we've spent about two hundred and fifty um because of the additional work that David described earlier that that is going to occur, we expect this project to cost uh a bit more um in the end. And again, for the purposes of this calculation, I'm assuming that that will come from ARP funds. Long story short, um based on sort of this snapshot in time, we've essentially spent all of our ARP funds um and and a few thousand more. That's going to be dependent on ultimately what the RBSD project comes in at. That's the biggest anominate anomaly at this point. And it also assumes we spend a hundred thousand dollars on C level rise consulting. So uh, this just gives you a kind of a snapshot in time. As a reminder, the ARP program requires that all of the money be allocated um by the end of this calendar year, so December twenty twenty four, and be spent by the end of twenty twenty six. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any more questions? I am seeing none.
Um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is very thorough and detailed. Appreciate your time putting this together.
Uh, just, just as a reminder, I mentioned it at the very beginning of the meeting. Um on June fifth, we will be presenting the town's operating budget to council for its initial uh review again. And and we will um briefly touch on the capital improvement program on June fifth. We, we will not be going through a, a sheet on June fifth. We, we will not be going through a, a sheet-by-sheet description as we did, uh, today. Uh, but we will give a broad overview of what was presented today. Um, and on June fifth, you will not, you will not be being asked to approve the budget. This is your, your first look at it. We'll return on June nineteenth at the council meeting for council to adopt both the, uh, operating budget as well as a CIP for fiscal year twenty-five.
Um, thank you. Um, so there is no council questions? And before we have the discussion, let's open a tu- a public comment on the item on the agenda.
Thank you. Um, really quickly, I, I don't know what O R T stands for.
Old Royal Trail.
Uh, can you come closer to the mic, please? Or is it on? Thank you. Welcome, Bruce.
Hi, um, I'd like to start out by saying, um, what a wonderful presentation. I, it's concise, precise, understandable. It was not only well-presented with graphics, um, the town staff is knowledgeable, and they did a terrific job explaining everything. Um, I think they're to be commended. Um, I, I, I have reviewed other presentations recently, and none of them have risen to the, um, level that I just witnessed today, um, for the town, um, CIP plan. So, I think, thank you to the town and to your staff. Um, on a side, and I'm not sure if you saw it, um, I was interested in a letter that the Green Team sent to, um, the Post Committee a couple of months ago. And I had forwarded it to the town council. I'm not sure if you had a chance to, um, review it or whether you've seen it yet. It was basically a letter from the Green Team saying that, um, we do a lot of work, the town is understaffed, and it's gonna be very difficult for any of us to be able to accommodate more work depending on new, um, implementations for the parks and areas that you're planning on. Um, it was, um, Leah, it may be in your inbox, um, but I just found it interesting, simple as that. Um, for, I didn't know whether there was communication between the Post Committee and the town council. For somebody who has actually read the two thousand sixteen Tiburon Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, I was quite pleased to see that you're still using the plan for, um, projects that you're continuing with. Um, and I'm also, um, wanna thank Greg for answering some of my questions regarding, um, the, um, Parks Plan, okay? Um, I understood that the town council asked them to switch gears and reveal their plans, um, and that, um, looking at the, I'm not sure whether the budget is sufficient, but you seem to explain it was. So, that was really my comment. There is a master, uh, updated plan. It's gonna be submitted tomorrow. I think it may be a good idea to review it. Um, I think that the, the maps alone are not the level of what the town is used to. They're not understandable, they're vague. Um, and I think that could be a, a, a great improvement. And I, I would, at this point, while they're doing an update, I would just recommend you make sure that they're doing exactly what you asked them to do. I was actually expecting to see, um, in, information or a, um, schedule of active activities versus passive activities. Um, I didn't see it in the plan you'll see tomorrow.
Well, well, thank you, Bruce. Um, what we're discussing now at this special meeting is the budget.
But you know what? Overall, um, this was a wonderful meeting, David, Patrick, Greg. Um, I, I, I commend the staff for the work they've done.
And thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
All right, um, is there any further discussion by the council?
So you have just two quick things, two, and this is in the, I know, I know it's not necessarily part on the agenda, but like, um, projects I'd love to see in the queue at some point, even if they're just aspirational at this point. Um, there are two of them. One of them has been on the, like, years ago, it was on, and it's a sidewalk from Gil Martin to San Rafael Ave on the outbound side of Tiburon Boulevard. Um, I'd love to see what, how much it would cost, when we could do it, um, 'cause I think that would be a benefit to the town if we could do that eventually. Um, and then the second one would be a, like a staircase or an informal trail from the parking lot at Lyford, the dirt one, not the completed one, up to Mariner Way, so that kids from Reed School and the, oh, and then a crosswalk at Mariner Way across Mar West to the library. So kids could walk from Reed to the library without crossing Tiburon Boulevard. And I believe that just connecting that dirt parking lot to Mariner Way is the shortest, easiest way to do that. There'd be no way to do it in an ADA compliant way, but if you could just do it as like a trails and staircase part of that town network, um, I think it's doable and it would be cheap. Um, but those are two things I'd love to see on the plan eventually as benefits to, potential benefits to the, to the residents. And, and they'd also be consistent with sort of our goals of making the town more pedestrian-friendly, yes, uh, less automobile usage, um, safe for, you know, minimizing or reducing traffic impacts on Tiburon Boulevard. I think those are all consistent with that. Thanks.
Um, so I, I'm sure staff is aware, um, but there was a study done on the costs of, uh, providing a sidewalk from Gil Martin, and you probably still have that data. Um, I, and, uh, there's something for a longer term, and, um, there's never been an opportunity to bring it up. Uh, it's probably longer term, uh, than the one-year budget, maybe the five-year budget. Uh, but you know, um, maybe once a month, maybe something less. Um, I pick up, uh, people coming from the senior housing on, uh, Beach Road Esperanza's area. Um, that steep part of the hill is very difficult for them to navigate. And a couple of times, people that I have picked up, uh, talk about the fact that more people would be walking downtown if it was easier to navigate. Um, so on a really longer term, maybe even the five-year plan, that might be something to consider. Um, it's probably too amorphous to put it in a budget, but I thought since there was an opportunity to bring it up now, I would. Anything else? All right, um, we're not approving anything. We're just accepting, and I think we all agree with Bruce, a very helpful, uh, informative budget. Capital Improvement Plan, for the Capital Improvement Plan. Thank you, and, uh, we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Can you ask a non-controversial question?
We're adjourned. You can ask whatever you want, Bruce.
I still struggle to understand how to get some.